...meeting Monday, June 26. We're convening at the Bennington Fire Facility on River Street. It's a little after 6:00. We had some interviews relative to the committee that we are looking at forming for review of our charter. But thank you for everyone's attendance and we'll have a very interesting meeting tonight, I'm sure. We're going to open our meeting by introducing the members of the Select Board. Chad?
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, my name is Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, everyone, Jean Connor.
And I'm Stuart Hurd. And Linda Bermudez is a clerk for the board.
And I'm Tom Jacobs again. I'm chairing the meeting tonight. If we could stand and recite the Fledge of Allegiance. Jim?
The Fledge of Allegiance is the law. I mean, I have to say this in my memory. Consider the power of the Constitution. One edition under our law. In this law, whatever you can do to solve a problem.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, folks. We have some consent agenda items to deal with. And I noticed in the consent agenda that we did have minutes from last Monday's meeting that were circulated, I believe, right? Stu, that was?
That is correct, yes.
June 19th?
June 19th.
Okay. So we take those under consideration, too. So we have the minutes of June 12th and June 19th, respectively, along with the warrants that have been circulated, including the one that we received earlier. Stu?
Is that the one we have on our?
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay.
Yeah. Stu, would you just comment on the last addition today? Because I have--
On the warrant itself?
The warrants this afternoon, yeah.
Yeah. This is a warrant that came together very late because we were waiting for some of the invoices to come in. But they're all either borrowings or, in effect, the county payment which is due July 5th. All of these borrowings are tied to a July 1 payment date. So this is really the last meeting we have in order to get these things signed and paid on a timely manner. So if you look down the list, it's basically the county, our payment to the county, and then most of the others are borrowing either for equipment or other things that we've accumulated over the years.
And that's been approved in last year's budget. This is--
All of the purchases have been approved probably in prior year's budgets.
Yeah.
And these are just continuing payments.
Okay. Could I have a motion to accept the items, the minutes, and the warrants as circulated?
So moved.
Got a first and a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes?
Can you pull June 19th out, please? I need to abstain on those.
Okay. Linda will note that. Are there any further discussion relative to the minutes or the warrants?
Comments, or?
Comment? Comments?
Yes.
Sure, please.
Can you hear him?
Please, go ahead.
Yes. Okay, so comment under citizens on June 12th? I'm just wondering if it's-- So under citizens, we have Chris Bates spoke. And then it says no citizens spoke this evening? I'm wondering if we could strike that and then say see later notes? Because that's when we moved into additional citizens comments later? Or something that indicates there are more--
They got drawn back in after we closed it. Additional citizens had signed in? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
The minutes as amended, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And the warrants as well? Aye. Good. We now will go into our citizen comment opportunity. We've reserved 15 minutes for that purpose. Folks have been nice enough to sign up in advance. I think we have William Stewart, Bill Stewart, first. Bill, you signed up first, you're first up. Thank you.
Good evening, Select Board. Good evening, town members and visitors. I'm here to reiterate on the situation that goes on in Morgan Spring on Bradford Street. Here to ask questions whether there's been any conclusion or any resolve to anything that's going on with this.
Obviously, nothing has been resolved. We've had a meeting with the folks from Crystal Rock. We've actually taken a site visit to a couple of places to look to see whether or not we could set up a different offloading area. And that's where we are right now.
Okay, so we're at the same place we were two weeks ago?
Yes. It's going to require acquisition of land, it's going to require engineering design. This is not going to move rapidly. But we're going to try to get something done before the fall, if at all possible.
Okay, well, that's all unwell. The other question is, there was an article in the Bennington Banner about Select Board having secret meetings during the week. It's quite a huge topic in the time at this point.
That's very nice of you to suggest that. Sometimes the banner reports what is sent to them. I can tell you that the meeting that we had relative to our water and sewer budget was well advertised and not so well attended by the-- And it was an open--
Open.
Yeah, okay. Let me--
Okay.
So it's nothing secret about it.
Well, it's the word around town is it's things are going on behind closed doors that the public is not knowing about. And it's all about hearsay, apparently more than said. That's what my question was, I wanted to hear it said.
Great, thanks.
And the second question is, on our shortfall of the $1.5 million that we have to borrow to take care of this little shortfall we have, backing up to the iteration about the water problem that we have, why we sell our water for tens of millions of dollars a year and take pennies and pelts and beads at $80,000 a year for the water, why can't we take that money that we give away every single year to a major water company and make the money for ourselves? And quit having to borrow the money and have this money and have no shortfalls? Because we have the gold, which is our own water, which is liquid gold at this point in day and time of the age, to keep the money for ourselves and quit giving it away.
Okay. I can suggest that there's no shortfall.
There's no shortfall.
What's the $1.5 million bond that we have to have for that?
Why don't we talk about--
I'll answer the question, Bill. It's called tax anticipation borrowing. Our taxes don't come due until November 10th of a given year. And so we borrow annually in anticipation of receiving those taxes.
We should have to.
How long has this been going on, Stu?
It's been going on in municipalities for as long as I can remember.
Like more than 20 years?
I mean, there were times in the past when we were-- Before we went to quarterly billing for water and sewer, we were borrowing $3 million in anticipation of taxes. The water and sewer being paid quarterly helps with our cash flow. So we've been able to reduce that to one and a half million. But it's a standard practice throughout the state of Vermont. Every municipality does it.
The school district does it as well.
Well, that's all good and fine. But when you have something sitting right in front of your face and we have to borrow money, we should be in the black, not in the red, having to borrow money. And we have the money sitting in front of us, but nobody's looking at it face value. I know the 14-year, 20-year ago contract, 14-year ago contract, which was a horrible decision on Stuart Hurd's behalf. At this point, with six years left, with a less than that, so almost five and a half, we should be thinking about, at the end of five years, why don't we take tens of millions of dollars a year that we give away for nothing and start keeping it for ourselves? Instead of having to borrow money, we just go to our own little bank and solve the problem because we're making $5, $6 million a year selling our water instead of $80,000. This is my main goal question here. Why don't we do something with the water for our own selves instead of quitting, selling it to somebody who doesn't care about us at all? That's my question that I pose. And to think about it is more than acceptable, is all I can ask.
Thank you, appreciate it, Bill.
Thank you.
Mike, did you get up? Second? I see your name on here, I didn't see the-- Oh, yeah, Woodlot. Woodlot, right?
Woodlot, right.
Got it, go ahead.
Have you got a conclusion to that? I hope you don't sell it. Have you come up with any kind of a--
No, it hasn't been presented to the board at this time.
It hasn't been?
Do you know when it's going to be? I'm hoping to be prepared to present something to the board on the 10th of July, which is the next meeting.
July, right. The other thing is, as I wrote today in the paper, why are we not taking the meetings and putting the real stuff in front of the people in front of these meetings here?
You know, that's your perspective of real. Frankly, I think this board is very comfortable with the agenda. I'm sure I'd hear if it wasn't. The matters that come before us are important to our board and our community. And frankly, Mike, you know, this is not a one-night-every-two-week job. I found that out very succinctly. We have to meet more frequently, and that means special meetings that are called for particular purposes, like the water and sewer budget. Normally, we meet on a Saturday.
No, but I mean, you talk about other things at that meeting, and nobody-- Was it warned? Was that meeting warned at the library?
Yes.
It was warned.
Yes.
Where did you put it in the-- Was it in the paper?
Yeah. It was on Facebook.
But I just wish you would reschedule so that these two meetings, where the TV is there and everybody can come out like-- I don't know what everybody's out there tonight, I'm sure they're not out here to hear me speak. But I just wish you would take and put the meat of the potatoes issues for this town so that the people can weigh in on them. Or at least be enlightened on what you people are planning to do.
I certainly agree. If we had one place, you know, the library is where we had the special meeting because the other meeting rooms were tied up. But frankly, I would really like to have it right here.
Why can't you schedule three meetings a month then, here? If you're that busy, why can't the Select Board-- There's no law that says you can't have more than--
I can tell you that we do have three meetings a month, I expect, if you take all things in consideration. But some matters are dealt with by special meeting, which means the public is given the opportunity to participate. We've got a volunteer board here--
No, you don't have a volunteer board. You're elected officials, you're not volunteering for anything.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to characterize it--
Thank you.
--that we're sitting here on our hands. But the long and short of it is, we have other jobs as well.
Mm-hmm.
And we give our all to the town as well as our community friends. So the long and short of it is, we've got a board that has been, over the last couple of years, very positive about the direction that this town can take and put our own personal resources into that effort. So--
Well, anytime anybody doesn't want to be on the board-- Anytime anybody doesn't want to be on the board, they can resign and let somebody else fill their seats.
I didn't want to give you that impression because I know how you like to run.
Oh, I always run. I run every night, but I do it at dark because if I run at night, then I lose my disability check, so. I don't lose my disability. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other folks that'd like to speak? I think I have a couple. Joel Luntner?
Yes.
Joel, thanks. Mary, I'm sorry. Speak-- Mary, I somehow got-- The way this sheet is-- Go ahead, Mary, you're the first signee. Joel, I'm sorry. Thanks. Okay, Mary, you're number one.
I have two items that I would like to ask. First, a point of inquiry as to how you are going to deal with the agenda item on solar-- this solar presentation. I know you had to sign up this evening for folks to sign in, but this is a presentation that most of the folks will be seeing for the first time. So I'm not sure how this board thinks people are supposed to necessarily comment on a new proposal. So I would have a feeling that many of these folks will have questions to ask, and I'm hoping that during-- after the presentation, or during the presentation, or whatever your process or policy is, is that that will be honored, that people can ask questions, but also that there will be another public meeting in an agenda item if need be for the citizens to be able to speak on this topic.
I'm going to defer to the vice chair for some comments--
Yeah, I'll explain it all when we get into it. He's going to have to recuse, but the answer, basically, yes, that we will be taking public comment tonight. And I'll be holding it open so that we can take public comment, you know, at a second meeting. And part of the impetus there is, well, so the answer is yes.
But you're not answering my question.
What's the question again?
The question is, will people have the opportunity tonight, whether after the presentation or during the presentation, that they may ask questions to make sure that they're understanding what the presentation is meaning?
Yes.
And you're sending a comment-- A sign up for comment. Folks may not be wanting to comment tonight because this will be a lot to digest for a lot of these-- For everyone. So there will be another hearing--
Yes.
--or two after this?
There will be another hearing, yes.
Just one?
We'll see how it goes.
What does that mean?
We'll see if we get through the comments.
The comments at the next meeting?
Yeah, if we have enough time at this meeting and at the next meeting, then we'll feel like we have given it time to air.
And will that be done as an agenda item at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. My second question is, this is probably the third time I'm at this table, have requested for an agenda item on water issues pertaining to the town. I was here, I think, two meetings ago and then two weeks before that asking because we have some priority issues before us. And I am yet to see that on an agenda. And I was promised at both meetings we would be setting something up so that the town of Bennington citizens could be aware of what's going forward.
Our town manager will circulate through your column and also at the manager's report exactly the, I think Mary's referring to, if I recall, priority lists of various--
Yes, yes.
No, quite honestly, I asked at the meeting, you are the sitting water board. You as the Select Board are also slash the water board. I asked for you folks to come with an understanding of what projects and what your plan is as the water board, to come forward and tell us what it is.
Thank you very much.
I don't want to be reading comments in an article, just like you commented on an article in today's paper. I don't want to have hearsay. I'd like to be able to sit at a meeting, and if people are able to comment or ask questions, that they are allowed to do that. That is what public citizenry is in being able to communicate with their elected officials.
Thank you very much for your comments. We'll take them under advisement.
Wow.
Joel, could you visit, please? Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, Joel.
Joel Luntner. I didn't realize tonight was going to be so busy, so I'm not going to pass out the kind of reference point material that I had brought with me. Instead, I'll just give you a kind of a brief overview of what I'm hoping to do.
Great.
We're hoping to-- We had been talking about doing a mural on the brick wall of our building facing Katy Cleaver. We've been talking about it for the past couple of years. I had originally thought, well, maybe we'll do some sort of street art class and do some sort of project out there. What I think, now that the park looks like it's going to be built, I see it really more as an opportunity to do something really beneficial for the whole downtown, that's going to be welcoming, that's going to add to the main street scape. So murals have popped up in towns, especially street art murals, over the past five years or so. One of the things that has become popular over the past couple of years are chalkboard, exterior public chalkboards. And I think that's kind of where we're settling on. It's an opportunity for it to be interactive, not just something for people to look at, but rather for someone-- For people to interact with. What I'm hoping tonight, I'm not looking for any sort of approval, I'm not offering any sort of proposal. What I'm hoping for is the opportunity to collaborate with you in terms of how and when the park is designed, in terms of the wall that I understand, that would abut my wall, the brick wall. If that part of the park were constructed, we really couldn't do either a mural or a chalkboard-- Community chalkboard. So I'm just wondering if there's some way that we can work with those who are responsible for designing the park to maybe take that into consideration while-- And give us a little two, three-week padding to come up with a formal proposal so that the DRB can look at it, so we can show it to the Select Board, whatever else needs to happen.
Could I defer to Stuart and Dan?
Certainly, we can take that to the folks that are doing the design and take a look at how it might work and how it might fit in. So, yes.
Okay. Will someone be in contact with me so we can--
Sure thing.
Okay, great. Thank you much.
Let us know if things-- How things go in that context, okay?
In the next few weeks.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you much.
Forrest Bird?
Rory Price.
Okay. Who is for-- Okay, come on up, I'm sorry, Rory. Next time, we're going to have to number everybody, they're all over the-- Go ahead, Rory.
Have a little--
Thank you. Thanks, Ray.
All right. So my name is Rory Price, and I'm the coordinator at The Kitchen Cupboard here in Bennington, which is a food distribution program.
You're going to have to speak up because--
Okay, sorry.
You've got the storm in the background here.
Okay, so I'm Rory Price, the coordinator of The Kitchen Cupboard Food Distribution Program here in Bennington. And we're a program of Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services, also known as GBICS. And I'm here just to tell you a little bit about an initiative that we're supporting called Harvest for Kids. So as some of you may know, there's a five-week gap between the end of formal summer meal programs and the beginning of the school year. During the month of June into July, the Abbey Food Group provides roughly 22,000 meals to Bennington school kids who are in summer programs. But they aren't able to continue that into August, so a lot of families have a really stressful time trying to stretch their food budget while also buying back-to-school clothes and supplies. So we're trying to boost their nutritious food, what they can take. August is The Kitchen Cupboard's busiest month after the holiday season. And so we're, yeah, we're really just trying to make sure that families with limited means have access to nutritious foods. And this isn't just a kitchen cupboard program, it's the whole community has become involved. The hospital, Bennington College, United Way Act, and a whole bunch of others that are listed on your handout there. So we're just trying to provide extra food to families via The Kitchen Cupboard and the Pownell Food Pantry as well. So during our normal distribution hours, we'll have extra food available for families with children. And we're also hoping in Woodford for families that have transportation issues to be able to actually do some home deliveries if that's necessary. So while we've been really impressed with community support so far, we could still use some more help. So people can start a fundraising team by going to our website, which is benningtoncares.org/bc/harvest. We also need folks to volunteer to haul food and prep produce so that it's readily available for kids to snack on. We also have a one-time donation spot on our website. And then just, I'd encourage you to let your social and professional circles know that this is something that's going on that we could really use some help with. So, yeah, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Yeah. What's your estimated budget shortfall for that month in August?
So we were hoping to raise roughly $15,000.
$15,000.
There's a lot of children who will be able to access this. The Kitchen Cupboard alone serves over 300 children each month. So to add, you know, extra marketing and be getting more families, and then also reaching out to Pownell, it's not a stretch to think that we would reach many more than that.
So that's just for the month of August?
Just for the month of August, yes. Yep.
Wow. Is there any way, you know, amongst my fellow board members that we could see our way to making some sort of contribution?
Stu, what's your-- You know, these are--
Well, I've got a couple bucks in my pocket, I'm going to start there.
Yeah. But, you know, I think this is-- You've got some great community partners here already in play. I think this is a call out to the community to demonstrate its ability to participate, especially during the month of August. And just seeing this group, it's outstanding, what you've already accomplished. How we can support, probably it's going to be more the word of mouth--
Sure.
--and the folks that see the meeting tonight, that see how important this is because we're a community that still has significant needs. And I think it comes to the fore in August, when kids are about ready to go back to school and the cupboards have run bare. But keep us posted about--
I will.
--how things are going.
Sure.
And if you aren't getting the response that you need from the community, Rory, please share that with any one of us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rory. Now, I think it's appropriate, only because Forrest signed in last.
Hello, everybody. My name is Forrest Bird. I-- Actually, I think I came to you guys last time just before Story Night Review, and that's coming up in the middle of August this month-- Or next month. And we're going to be-- Our focus has changed a lot. I've, you know, hearing about murals from Fiddlehead and also from, you know-- My idea for an art walk has been kind of a constant one, and I've talked to pretty much everybody about that. But I-- We're basically working on a business plan and starting to connect with businesses. And so what I am proposing is basically a connection with all the businesses all over Bennington, basically connecting a-- I don't know if it's a sponsorship kind of a thing that will allow businesses to directly participate and also get window painting included with their-- With subscriptions. So basically, by the end of August, I want to have a-- Have a group of businesses, a quite-- A large group of businesses connected with this Bennington Mural Arts Program, which will dedicate itself to a art walk, which will be all over downtown Bennington, in-- On Northside Drive and as well with North Bennington. And so I want to start to connect the whole thing, all the way from Papa Pete's, all the way up to the Performing Arts Center and Apple-- You know, the Apple Barn to North Bennington, and basically start to create a really interesting pattern of art all over town. So-- And that's in process. I've been with Brock for the last couple of months, so--
Great. Again, this is something that's-- We try to make a vibrant community, this has the ability to bring that to the fore. Have you talked with the John Shanahan's and the Matt Harrington's relative to this? Because they have a broad-brush approach to a lot of these things, that they might be helpful as well?
Yes, I try to be in contact with as many of the--
Yeah.
--John, definitely, and with quite a few members of the town as possible. So I-- Basically, being only one person going from place to place makes it a little tougher for me, and making appointments has been my biggest process right now.
Sure, it's a challenge.
Yeah. But this is my full-time job. Bennington Murals LLC has been formed, and I am now a full-on entity for doing murals for anybody, really. But I want to basically do community murals as my main focus. And so the stories are of our town and not just of one entity. So the idea of community support will be the entire focus of most of the topics on these murals. So that's the goal, anyway.
And I recommend that you speak with Joel, because he has got an approach to, and try to make this somewhat of a community event. A couple of years ago, we had the Catamounts, and the years before that, we've had the Moose. I think this community is looking for something like that to make maybe a more long-term difference. But I was up in Burlington a couple of weeks ago and saw their history mall-- Wall, all done. Runs about 100 yards on the side of an alleyway. It was terrific, and there's no reason why we couldn't do that, take some resources. But with the imagination like you bring, that's certainly something that we could and should run with. Don't give up the battle. Let us know if we can participate in any context. But I would say that the Chamber of Commerce and the Rotary and the Bennington Alliance, they should be instrumental as part of the discussion.
Well, I'm going to keep-- Continue to talk about this as I go, and I will just keep putting myself in front of will just keep putting myself in front of everybody's face in order to make this happen because I just, I love this stuff. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thanks. Thanks for coming. Go ahead.
Do you have any contact information and email address that you would be willing to?
I can hand out some business cards if you'd like, or benningtonmurals@gmail.com is the email right now. So, and yeah, please, the benningtonmurals.com will be online probably by Story Night Review is the idea, is the goal, so.
Okay, we can contact you through that?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It'll be in the minutes. Thank you. Thank you, citizens. I don't want to distract from the citizens' comment period, but if there are folks that didn't get the chance to sign in for whatever reason, and would like to address us on matters that are not on the agenda, feel free to speak up. If not, thank you for your comments during this period, and there are a lot of, a lot of interesting and appropriate things for us to deal with. At this point, the next item on the agenda is the Chelsea/Apple Hill Solar Projects. It's a presentation that is, I think, an ongoing, it's a revised presentation. I, for my own reasons, have to recuse myself and will join the audience to observe the proceedings, and I will turn the chair over to Vice Chair Donald Campbell. Please go.
I hate it when he does that. When he turns it over to me. Okay, okay. If, so if the board will just indulge me for a second before we start, Brad, I'm just gonna give a little overview of where I think we are. And I guess I'd ask this group, if, let's start this discussion with the notion that regardless of how you feel about these projects, none of us particularly want climate change. Probably most of us are in favor of some form of renewable energy, and all of us are in favor of adequately protecting the legal rights and privileges of our neighbors. So let's start with having that in common. When the Select Board became aware that the project was up for final PSB Public Service Board approval, without adequate screening, we convened an emergency meeting. At that meeting, we voted unanimously to oppose the projects. Our decision came very late in the game for the developers, I believe. But I think it also reflected an inadequate PSB process that didn't fully involve towns and town governments. Since that time, in some part, thanks to Bennington's position, state policy has evolved, giving towns a greater role in the process. In addition, our Select Board has developed a specific solar siting ordinance, strong town plan language setting parameters for future developments, a map of preferred solar sites, and we're working on gaining substantial deference status at the Public Service Board for future projects. So tonight is information gathering, and I'm gonna remind the board that this evening, we are listening and asking questions. We're not negotiating a settlement agreement. The board will hear first from Brad Wilson about details of the revised proposals currently before the Public Service Board. After his presentation, we look forward to citizens' questions and comments. As many of you know, Libby Harris, in the butter to the projects, has been at the center of this legal issue. She's not able to be here tonight, but I've promised her, I've personally promised her, that we will give her a chance to be heard. Our usual practice is to make a decision over the course of two meetings, accepting public comment only at the first. In this case, the board will also accept relevant comments on our, at our July 10th meeting, so to Mary Morrissey's point, but only from those unable to speak tonight. This may not be tidy, and it will prolong the process slightly, but Ms. Harris has been through a lot and deserves a chance to speak. You may, of course, submit written comments for our consideration anytime, even if you speak tonight. So while Brad is presenting, we will be circulating a sign-up sheet for anybody who knows they would like to address the board. Because this is a town decision, hearing from Bennington citizens will be our first priority, so please indicate where you live on that sign-up sheet. I'll try to fit in as many comments as possible. Your efforts to be succinct and to avoid rehashing each other's points will help that out a lot. Please direct your comments and questions to the board, not to each other. As always, we will not tolerate personal attacks directed towards any of our citizens, guests, or staff. So let's acknowledge that with solar siting, there's often an inherent tension between an affected neighborhood and larger community goals. These are both entirely valid interests. This board is charged with deciding what balance is best for our community. Neither will we be swayed by newbie behavior, nor do we want developers and the Public Service Board running roughshod on our community. Solar siting's a hard problem, but it doesn't have to be antagonistic. So thank you in advance for letting our discussion be one of civil discourse and mutual respect.
Mr. Campbell, thank you. Did I hear you just say that anybody who speaks here does not have this subject, can't speak again at the next meeting? Did you say that, or?
We would, I, we would like to try to have everybody speak tonight that can, and if you're unable to speak tonight, you're certainly welcome to speak at the next, speak at the next meeting. We'll give first preference to anyone, yes.
Okay, well, they can speak at the next meeting, because there's gonna be stuff they're gonna hear here tonight, that they're gonna, I'm thinking about, in the backwoods.
Okay, alright, that's fine. Yeah, yeah. So Brad, we have, some of us, although I'm not sure the people in the audience have seen your full site plans, but please walk us through that. Again, while Brad is doing that, Dan will be walking around with a sign-up sheet, and would certainly welcome you to sign up if you, to Mary's point, if you don't know if you want to speak tonight, you're welcome to sign up and then choose not to speak. You're also welcome to choose to speak at the July 10th meeting. So, take it away, Brad.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm Brad Wilson with EcosEnergy. It's nice to be in front of you again tonight. Thanks for having me. Don introduced here to discuss the revised site plans for the Chelsea and Apple Hill Solar Projects. In the interest of time, the slides that have been prepared are going to be concise, and we're gonna try to move through the presentation fairly quickly to make plenty of time for questions, answers, and comment. We'll go through the presentation. I'd like to request, let's just get through the presentation, start to finish first, and then save questions, answers, and comments until afterwards. And with that, let's hop in. Very, very briefly, just a brief description of why we're here. Chelsea and Apple Hill Solar Projects are both solar electricity generating facilities proposed here in Bennington. Each is a 2.0 megawatt generating capacity. They are ground-mounted fixed tilt projects. That means the solar projects aren't on a rooftop, they're on ground-mounted racking, and they don't move throughout the day on motors. They're in a fixed position. These projects would sell renewable power under a long-term power purchase contract. The term of that contract is 25 years. The generated power is used locally here in the Bennington area. The generated power is also sold locally to utilities in Vermont. Also sold locally to utilities in Vermont are the renewable energy credits generated by these projects. These two projects are both proposed on a 27-acre wooded property north of the Vermont Welcome Center location. A very brief timeline on where we started and bringing us to today. In April 2013, both projects were awarded their long-term power purchase agreements. In June 2014, application was submitted to the Public Service Board for the Chelsea project for a certificate of public good. In March 2015, the application was submitted to the Public Service Board for the Apple Hill project. In August 2015, as Don mentioned earlier, the town voted to intervene at the Public Service Board for these projects. In February 2016, the Public Service Board issued a denial of a certificate of public good for the Chelsea project, but not Apple Hill. In March 2017, that denial of the Chelsea CPG was appealed by us to the Vermont Supreme Court. And in June 2017, the PSB issued an order reopening the Apple Hill case for further testimony, further exhibits, and an additional technical hearing. So where are we at on the present day? Brings us here tonight. The original site designs generated feedback from neighbors, interested members of the community, and the town, including you members of the Select Board. As I mentioned in my letter to you in April, our goal is to find a path forward for both of these projects that is a good fit for the town, a good fit for the community. We have implemented the feedback we received from the town and neighbors into revised site plans for these projects. And we are here tonight to request the town to consider these revised site plans and hopefully consider voting to support these projects going forward. Very quickly, the project location, as I mentioned earlier, 27-acre property. It's shaped like an L, located just north of the Vermont Welcome Center location in the middle of the highway interchange. Here's an aerial view of that 27-acre property. You can see it's currently fully wooded, although the forest type here is marginal. It's full of invasive species. It is not a valuable wildlife habitat or anything like that. We have the Welcome Center to the south, an industrial commercial area to the west, the Apple Hill Residential Neighborhood to the north. Very quickly, I'm gonna put up a couple of slides showing what the original site designs looked like. This first slide shows the original clearing boundaries. Anything in the green-hatched area was proposed to be cleared on the original design, approximately 24.7 acres of clearing. And these slides will show both projects together. Here's the original site design showing both projects as they laid out on the property. The revised site plan significantly reduces the footprint of the project by up to almost 40%. The clearing boundaries is down to 15.9 acres, which is the area within the green-hatched portion. Area on the property outside of the green-hatched area will remain in its current state. Here's how the current site designs sit within that clearing boundary. You can see that the way this reduction in project size was done mainly, there are a number of different methods, but mainly decreasing the amount of space between each row of solar modules. We're able to do that by using a different type of solar module that is available in a higher wattage, which means that fewer solar modules are required, but also reducing the tilt angle of the solar modules to 15 degrees, down from 30 degrees. This has a couple of benefits. It reduces the height of the solar modules above the ground from about nine feet down to about seven feet. And it also allows us to move the rows closer, much closer together without creating shade between row to row to row. That is what's allowed us to compress the project footprint into a smaller size. Here's an aerial view of the revised plans laid out on the site, and you can see that the compressed footprint has created a greatly increased amount of existing vegetation buffer around the project perimeters. Specifically to the south, there are over 200 feet of buffer strip. Along Route 7, over 100 feet. And along the northern property boundary, we range from 100 feet up to over 200 feet of buffer area. One other element I will point out versus the original site plan, the project access driveway for the Chelsea project originally was proposed off of Apple Hill Road up in this location, and it came across this property down to the northeastern corner of the Chelsea Array. That driveway has been relocated to come off of Willow Road from the south. There is no driveway access proposed off of Apple Hill Road anymore. Here is the zoomed-in version of the aerial overlay that also shows, in addition to the vegetation buffers being retained, we're also proposing a large amount of supplemental landscape plantings along the western boundary for the purpose of the Route 7 view, along the northern boundary in an area where we thought that location could use a little additional help, and along this northern property boundary for the purposes of the view from Libby Harris's home. We generated a large number of new visual simulations for these revised site plans. The visual simulations are available in a variety of different scenarios. We generated visual simulations for the Chelsea project only. We also generated visual simulations for both Chelsea and Apple Hill together. For those two scenarios, we generated summertime simulations and wintertime simulations. In the interest of time, what I'm going to show you tonight are the wintertime simulations showing both Chelsea and Apple Hill. This simulation is from the Vermont Welcome Center. And what you will see in these simulations is that the projects have become very effectively screened from all of these viewpoints. I believe the Select Board members received hard copies. These simulations are designed to be visually accurate when they're printed on an 11-by-17 sheet of paper and held roughly at arm's length from, from your face. But with the projector, we should have a pretty close approximation tonight. This is the Vermont Welcome Center view, and we can come back to any of these views later on tonight for discussion if necessary. This is the simulation from Route 7 traveling north. This is the simulation from Residence 1. This is Libby Harris's home, looking south. This is the simulation at Residence 2. This is a home that's located more directly north of the Chelsea Array. And this is the simulation from Residence 3, which is to the north of the Apple Hill Array and east of the Chelsea Array. Again, these are wintertime simulations showing both Chelsea and Apple Hill, and they show that these screening designs create very effective screening for these projects. We also, in our discussions with some of the neighbors, received a lot of questions about, two different topics that have some similarities. There were questions about what value the trees on the project property may be providing for highway noise and wind that may be coming from the south and the west, crossing across the project property and up into the Apple Hill Residential Neighborhood. To really thoroughly answer these questions for good, we retain the services of two experts in these fields to take a good look at these and come up with a quantitative analysis of these questions. Regarding highway noise, we performed an onsite analysis in April of this year. We did onsite data collection. We placed a number of microphones around the property to collect a week's worth of baseline noise data to determine how much benefit the trees on the project property may be offering. We then modeled the current scenario against the proposed project scenario. The results showed a potential increase of around 2.5 decibels on average. The report goes on to explain that this is not a significant increase as anything less than 3 decibels is typically not perceptible by the human ear. Also to point out that the noise source in question, the cars traveling on the highway, are not noise sources generated by the project. We also performed a similar analysis for the question of wind speed, the question of are the trees on the project property shielding the Apple Hill Residential Neighborhood from higher wind speeds that they would experience if the trees were not there? This analysis was also performed in April 2017. We created a 3D computational fluid dynamic model of the area and ran two different scenarios, the current scenario versus the project scenario. The resulting model, which was focused on Libby Harris's property, showed a potential increase of around 1 mile per hour of average velocity located at her home. Again, this is an increase that is not significant and is not perceptible by your average person. Also to point out, the project is not creating wind. Wind is a naturally occurring phenomenon that exists everywhere. Couple more slides, and then we'll wrap it up. This is a bullet point list of the major changes in the project design versus the originals that were submitted to the Public Service Board. The project footprint in total between Chelsea and Apple Hill has been reduced to 14.5 acres, down from 23.1. The clearing area is 15.9 acres versus the original number of 24.7. These are around 40% decreases. We have greatly increased setback distances to property lines, and also greatly increased the retained vegetation buffer areas around the project perimeter. The module racking height has been reduced by almost 2 feet, and the module type has been changed. It's no longer a module type that you see in a lot of Vermont projects. It has almost a bright blue color. These are a dark black color, these higher wattage modules. We've also added tall fencing with mesh screening material in certain locations where it's needed, and designed additional robust landscaping screening to be planted in certain locations as shown a few slides earlier. We've also redesigned the location of that Chelsea access driveway. We believe these projects offer significant benefits to the community of Bennington, primarily emission-free electricity generation. These projects together will generate enough renewable electricity in the course of an average year to offset the annual power usage of over 900 Vermont homes. This will reduce the need for fossil-fuel-based electricity generation elsewhere and will reduce regional carbon emissions. These projects will contribute directly to the renewable energy goals set forth in the Bennington Town Plan, the Bennington Regional Energy Plan, and the Vermont State Renewable Energy Goals. Just as an example, the Bennington Regional Energy Plan sets a goal for the town of Bennington to host 25 megawatts of new solar generation within the next few decades. These projects together would knock out almost 20% of that goal in one fell swoop. These projects would make significant contributions to the town's municipal tax revenue, adding an estimated $42,000 per year of additional tax revenue on top of the tax revenue the property is already generating. Over the 25-year life of the project contract, this adds up to over $1 million of revenue for the town of Bennington. The projects also contribute to the state education fund. The projects also contribute to the state education fund at approximately $16,000 every year. We believe these projects are a good neighbor, low impact, they are very effectively screened. We don't believe your average person will know they're there, and they have a very low burden on municipal services. With that, I'll leave this slide up. We can go back to any other slide as necessary. We can also bring up additional documentation as needed. I want to make ourselves available for questions, comments. I also have with me tonight a number of the experts that helped put these materials together. We have Mark Kane, who did the aesthetics and visual analysis and generated the visual simulations. We have Ryan Hock, who did the noise analysis, and we have Scott Reynolds, who did the wind analysis. They're available to answer your questions directly on those topics. I'm also available as needed, and we'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Before we go into a sort of citizen comment and question period, is there anything from the board, particularly for Brad, that people would like to ask?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
I don't know what page it was. It was the one, the slides that showed the trees, which a lot of them are evergreens.
Was it one of the visual simulations?
It's visual simulation from viewpoint at Residence 1.
Okay.
So were those trees planted, or are they existing?
These trees here are part of the additional landscaping plantings that are proposed.
Okay. In year what will they look like that?
Five.
Five. The folks that did the analysis of the wind and the noise, are they independent of your company, or are they part of your company?
They are part of a different company. They're not part of Ecos.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
So they're totally separate from you as a corporation?
Correct.
Other questions from the board? I have one question that I'd like to ask if you're wind expert. I'm not sure. M and E, is that right? So I was a little bit interested in the difference between the average wind speed and the, looked like the gust wind speed or the maximum wind speed. The average wind speed didn't look like it was projected to change very much, but the gust wind speed looked like it changed a fair amount, 10, 12, 14 percent, something like that. How are the two different, and what would it mean to the homeowner?
Well, the gusts basically come from turbulence, in a like way you would experience in an airplane, sort of thing. And I believe it was actually higher looking for the answers.
Having a little bit of a hard time here.
Scott, do you want to come up to the mic?
Yeah, why don't you? If I could ask you. Could I ask you to come up to the mic?
Yeah.
No?
Would you rather me answer that now or use the slides that have been generated for the report to the answer?
Are you going to get to those slides? Are you going to bring those back up?
We can bring those slides up if they're needed. They're not part of the presentation deck.
I can say, you know, why you guys would like to...
Well, it's a little bit of a picky question. We have 11 people here from the public that would like to speak tonight. We are already pushing time, so I guess maybe I'll push my question off for now.
Is it possible that people can have a copy of one of the select board members?
Sure.
And get asked their questions appropriately?
Sure.
Does Brad have copies for the citizens?
I think he's calling, I think he's calling it up.
There we go. If you go to this link, you'll be able to download...
I'm saying, Brad, for this evening, respectfully to be presenting, the citizens should have the right to have a copy of the...
Absolutely. And we can put anything on the screen for you to view here in the room tonight and for your own use at home. If you visit this link, you'll be able to download digital copies of everything that the Select Board has.
Do I want to ask you a question? I think your point is very valid. Why don't you have a gentleman on wind speed for the citizens, because that's important thing, Rob?
Yeah, I'm going to take this, Mary, right now.
Scott? Scott, just come up and answer a question. Here.
So maybe I've opened a hornet's nest, but if you would be willing to walk us through, it's a short report, but I guess the conclusions on that report were interesting to me, anyway.
Okay.
Beg your pardon? If you would introduce yourselves, please, and state your company and let us know what your role is.
Sure. I'm Scott Reynolds with ME Engineering, and this is Andy Straub, also with ME Engineering.
Yeah, we can, if you just go to the end of the report. I think we can.
We also have a separate report that has the animations in it and all that. I think what Brad has is a PDF version, which doesn't, can't accommodate animations. And we can make that available, too.
While they're calling that up, I guess to the points that have just been made, in the packages that we got, we not only had a report that more or less talked about the clearing boundaries and site plans, but we also saw a report that was, the visual appearance and glare, it was a sort of analysis of would there be any glare? And there was also a highway noise analysis report that was completed and given to us. And I apologize that they're not available, that...
This one?
That's not available to you right now. But this was the, that was the very slide that I was interested in, in the wind report. I guess that's Libby Mills' house, is that right?
Yeah, let me just explain it. This is a zoom up of a lightness of her house in the brown. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Brad.
In the brown here is a lightness of her house, and in front of the house, we placed a plane where we could look at the actual velocity of the wind. And Case 1 would be up here, 25 mile an hour wind day, and the wind is coming from 185 degrees south, so just a little bit west of south. So it's basically coming directly at her house. And we ran this transiently so you could pick up the turbulence and stuff that's going on over time. That's where the animations come in. And the average speed on this plane here is about 26 miles an hour by the time it gets up the hill and the wind reattaches to the ground after the trees and all of that stuff. And I'd be glad to talk with anybody about, you know, the dynamics behind that if you'd like. But you can see that the average velocity is about 26 miles an hour, you know, before anything is done. And there's one side of the house that'll see slower speed than the other side. And then after, you know, the area's cleared south of the house, it actually goes down a little bit, you know, the velocity, but you get some peak speeds up near the apex of her roof. And that's where the 34 miles per hour, I'm sorry, I said that the other way around. It actually goes up to 27 miles an hour average, and it's 34 miles an hour peak up near the roof.
I see.
Does that make sense?
That does make sense. I was trying to imagine the difference between if you're driving 26 miles an hour and you stick your hand out the window and you drive 27 miles an hour, whether you could feel the difference. And I'm not sure you could, but I wondered if you would feel the difference between 30 miles an hour and 34 miles an hour, although it looks like it's pretty much just the very crest of the roof.
Yeah, and it, what happens there is it's a different turbulence, you know, for a scenario where the wind takes a longer path of open space, you know? The closer you are to the trees, the lower the velocity is going to be up at the apex, but the higher the velocity may be down on the walls of the building.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry to put you on the spot for that.
Before we close, will we ask you a few questions?
I'm going to wait, Mike, and do it in order here. You're on the list, though. So...
Thanks, guys.
So I would like to, again, apologize for not having these documents out for everybody, but I would like to invite our local representative to start off. Mary Morrissey has been a big part of the subcommittee that was, that helped develop the various pieces that we've been putting together, the solar siting pieces and the revised town language and a number of other things. And she continues to be a big part of that. So Mary, I guess, to the extent possible, would like to try to keep these comments fairly succinct, as I say. Would you be willing to kind of kick off and come on up, please?
Mine will be basically questions, so I'm not sure who will be answering.
Sure.
So obviously, you said the town would benefit, so what at this point is the Select Board being offered for each lot? Is there a money figure that's going on, is associated with that? That's my understanding there is.
Where are we on this?
That's part of settlement negotiations. I don't think we can disclose that at the present time. But council is...
Why I'm...
Because it's part of settlement negotiations. Council is here to advise us. Am I correct in that, Rob?
I think that's your choice. Both sides know what the numbers are.
If it doesn't matter, Rob, I guess I would rather just have it out. And if, I don't...
I'm fine.
What's the pleasure of the board? Better out than in?
Transparency. Tell them.
All right. So what, and Brad, you don't mind? Okay. So what's been, what's been offered right now is that the town would be offered $100,000 per project as a way of offsetting our legal costs and expenses and some of the other things that we've been through. So as you know, we've racked up $50,000 or more of legal expenses already on the town's nickel, so...
So when you say offset legal expenses, other projects that have been done around the state actually have received somewhat similar, I guess, payments or buy-off payments to towns. So wouldn't you be looking to have any of our legal fees reimbursed if full amount on top of the 100 and 100?
We could. We really haven't been, we're not at that stage yet. You know, we're at the stage of, should this happen at all? And we haven't gotten to a sort of a negotiation on that.
Well, I guess my concern is all this money being thrown around, whether it's $50,000 at one point that Libby Harris was told she would get, also supposedly some land would be put into a land trust. And which land trust is that looking to go into or conservation? And I guess what land are you looking to put into land trust from where?
I'm not familiar with it. Maybe I've got it up there.
Right, but obviously, there's a land trust or a foundation you're wanting to put it in, and there's got to be, she can't just pick a piece of property and say she wants it in conservation or land trust. So what are you talking about?
A donation to a land conservation fund or something.
Mary, Mary, what's your question, please?
Okay, it's with, in regards to land that would be going into a land trust or a conservation foundation. So you're talking that it's more money instead of land?
So the board hasn't discussed that.
Okay.
If there wasn't the answer to that question, what was the answer?
Could you say it again?
The answer was it's donations to a land conservation fund.
So the other thing was, as I said, the solar site in actually New Haven, they are being paid or look to be paid $100,000 for each of their parcels. They're a much smaller wattage, so why would the town not, or I guess I would recommend the town to say we should possibly be getting double the amount of what's being asked right now? Just a couple quick more.
Okay.
What happens with the Malone's appeal to the Vermont Supreme Court in the Chelsea solar case that's now pending? Where does that put that?
Rob, would you be willing to come up and help us with that, please?
That case is on appeal, and unless there's some sort of other resolution, it will be decided by the court. It'll be briefed over the summer and the fall, and be decided by the court probably next winter. If there's a resolution whereby the town agrees to not oppose or support the revised project, I imagine it would go back to the Public Service Board for a full set of hearings.
Rob, how much have we spent so far on this?
I have no idea. I haven't checked...
You have a ballpark?
I haven't checked my billing on this. I, you know, we...
Stu, do you know?
I really, I should have been prepared, but I'm not.
Ballpark is $45,000 to $50,000.
That we've spent so far.
Mary, you have more questions?
A couple more.
Okay. Mary, go ahead, please.
So again, my question that I basically asked before was, would the Malone's be looking to reimburse the town fully for the litigation that has been done thus far?
Okay.
And so what benefits are we actually accruing through this project? And again, I guess I would want to know, I think some of the comments that were said tonight is there was a big benefit, and yet the original project, and has something changed because the recs, the renewable energy credits were being sold out of state. So how is that working right now? Because I don't believe that's changed, but maybe you can tell me something different.
Okay. And anything else? I'll get Brad up when you've given us your list here.
Just a couple more. And so at this point, this is pretty broad question, but why would the developer not be working as a good neighbor with the town to identify other spots to possibly be doing their solar? In what we have worked very hard on our subcommittee energy site, where we have identified over 550 acres, I would think all of this money that you're looking to buy out citizens and the town and whatever, you probably could have a very beautiful piece that is in a preferred site that would actually benefit the town in a much better way. So I guess I would hope that that would be looked at seriously, because I think we've worked very hard wanting solar, but wanting it in preferred sites that truly do benefit the town of Bennington. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Can we get some answers from Brad?
So yeah, let's bring Brad up, and Brad, I guess if, this is going to take a while if we do it this way with all the responses, but let's just do the best we can here.
Absolutely. I'll try to be as brief as I can.
So, you know, I think there was a question about reimbursement, there was a question about benefits and recs, and there was certainly a question about other sites around town.
Absolutely. Donna, I think in the conversation between you and Stu and Rob, I think you really shared the correct information about the proposed fee payment to the town. The idea is that it would reimburse the town for the current litigation fees so far. And that is the correct information in that regard. You had the amount absolutely correct for what's been proposed. Mary's question about RECs, I'm glad she asked that. As I noted earlier in the presentation, the renewable energy credits are being sold locally to utilities here in Vermont. That has always been the case from day one, that it has never not been the case. I'm not exactly sure how that idea that they were being sold out of state took root, but I have heard that being said to the select board by various members of the public. It is not true, never has been. The RECs are staying in Vermont. Regarding Mary's comments about other sites, and she's referencing the solar siting map that Subcommittee, the Planning Commission, I believe, is working on. So, a draft of that map hasn't even been released to the public yet.
No.
It hasn't gone through public hearings, and it certainly hasn't been adopted by the select board. However, if there are other good sites for solar in the town of Bennington, we would absolutely love to do more projects in this town. In fact, we have one that we've proposed, Battle Creek One, that I do believe is located on a preferred site per the current draft of that siting map.
Let's not get into that tonight, shall we? But thank you for that.
Agreed. But hopefully those answer those questions. Jim, that answer your questions there?
Kinda, sorta.
I would say, don't go far. Let's see if we can get somebody else up here, but stand tap here.
Sure. I'll be, I'll be right here.
No, I'm ready. Have a seat, please. Why are you so invested in just this little plot of land when other sites could be mined? I just, explain that to me. After there's been so much contention and so many remarks from all these people that I've known, probably close to all my life, and the treatment that they received, you know, why you would consider, why you would continue to fight over that when you could just as easily walk away from it?
I don't think I'll respond to that question, Jim.
Why not?
This is a project that we're proposing, and the select board has the details of the project in front of it for consideration.
So, let's, let's move on, and we've got 10 more people that we'd like to hear from and, we'd like to hear from, and I'm just gonna start at the top of the list. I do apologize to the three people that have signed up that don't live in Bennington, but I'm gonna try to get through the Bennington residents first. So, top of the list would be Jerry Byrd, please.
Well, after that, I'm not so sure where I'm gonna start. I live in Bennington. I've lived here for almost four years now. My wife and I moved here basically from California. Really excited to be here. There's so many attributes about Bennington that we feel are stellar, from classical music to art venues to land and exploration opportunities that are just unbelievable. Plus, it's located near everywhere. So, we've loved moving into this town. However, seeing how this town buckles to a few bullies, from Walmart to auditoriums in the secondary school to solar projects throughout the town, it upsets me. And how, how we can allow a few people, the Apple Hill gang, to dictate how our...
Jerry, I'm gonna ask you to not be specific about individuals, and I'm gonna, let's ask, not make this personal tonight.
I won't, I won't. But it seemed like Jim sort of made it personal with the way he was talking about the development of the project and sticking with it. So, as a solar advocate and recognizing the situation that we're in with our planet, it seems like with all the work that Brad and his people have done to work with our town and develop a project that will actually help 900 family homes, is, to me, unconscionable for us to sit here on our hands and, again, do nothing to mitigate some of the circumstances that we are facing right now, whether you wanna think that way or not. I don't, I don't know if anybody listens or not. I mean, I heard the accusations brought forward that were absolutely against what, what had been presented as facts. I've heard constantly people rail against this project when, in the presentation, they are absolutely opposite to the facts. I haven't seen any of these people at any of the BRCRC meetings to look and see what we could do better and what they've asked for over the years as being part of the BRCRC commission for a couple of years myself when I first got to this town. So, you know, I really implore the board to, to, to think about this and to think about it not from a perspective of a few people, but for all of this town and all of this state.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your comment. Next on the list, maybe a relative, Forrest Byrd? Sorry, you guys happen to be sitting next to each other, I guess. Mike, you'll be coming up next. Mike, you'll be next.
Yes, I am a relative of Jerry Byrd. My name is Forrest Byrd. I talked a little bit before, but I'm also, I've worked for Power Guru. We did a major solar installation up in, off of 7A last year. And knowing the process of developing a plan that works for the whole town has been kind of part and parcel of everything. I mean, just, just, just my employment with them basically got me to know how important it is that everybody's voice is heard, but it's also important that we move forward in a positive way, knowing that if this is an oil company or something else, we tend to be a little, we've, we've been more lax on these kind of things. And solar is a direction for the next 25 years. We have to start thinking like that. And it's extremely hard to claim land, it's extremely hard to make agreements with everybody. It's, it's, once you have a place to stay, it's good to stick with it and finish the project and then move to a better project. Hopefully, it will be more productive next time. So, I'm an advocate for the fact that Apple Hill, this project adapted so well to the new, the new plan feels so much better as far as a condensed plan, and, and I'm in, I'm in support of this project, so I just wanted to say that, so...
Thanks. Do you have any questions for any of the experts while we're, while you're here?
No. I, I don't have any questions, no, thank you.
Thank you. Mike, come on up.
Thank you. You're welcome. Well, where do you begin? First, I'm not a relative or a relation in any way to Mr. Byrd, and I'm thankful for that. We all want, we all want solar. Nobody in this room, I think, is against solar. It's where it's applicable and what's applicable and where it's best for Bennington. Bennington Jimmy's basically, I think, on the point that, why this site? There are many other sites that could be used. I'm grateful it was shrunk down from 24, 27, down to 14, but there are other sites that won't impact us at all and give us the benefit. That's what I, Jim is right on that point. Why are we not, as a select board, saying to them, this offer is not acceptable. You come back with an offer that can use other lands that we own, or other sites, or buildings, roofs, schools, whatever, the old, the dumps or whatever, then we'll start talking to you. But I hope this select board doesn't put all the money up and win at the PSB and now sell out for money. That isn't what this is about. And they haven't showed a site view from the new highway. And all you people are trying to do is bring new things to downtown, which is great to a degree, but it's our scenic beauty that Bennington in Vermont has always been known for. And when you start stripping trees, they might not be the best trees in the world, but they do produce oxygen, they do produce some, produce some habitat for critters, animals. And I just think this is a lousy choice. I am not part of the Apple Hill gang, and I wish I lived up there, I would be. But I think they got a valid point, and the Apple Hill gang voted for you people to represent all of us in this town. And $42,000 a year is chump change. It reminds me of what we did on Bradford Street, ruined that neighborhood for $80,000 a year. If they're, if we're that poor in this town that we gotta worry about monetary value that some company like this is gonna come and basically tear down our trees and change our whole chemistry of our town, I say no. When they can do it easily on other sites, that maybe we could give them property, but this is ridiculous. And then what happened with the wind guy? He had an assistant there. How come they didn't, that wind thing that you brought up, Don, very valid point, why didn't they show when there's a wind storm how much it's gonna increase? We have some hell of storms around here in the wintertime, and that's when Libby might have to put a whole thing up in front of her house. So, I really wish this board would stay strong, and I don't think the citizens are gonna back up and say, no, 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 we don't wanna fight this anymore. We wanna fight this, right down to our last dollar. Nobody should be able to come into this town for money and buy us out. Thank you.
So, next on the list is, thank you, Mike, next on the list is Wendy Lawrence. While Wendy's coming up, I guess I'm gonna ask the board, you know, I'm already over my time on this, but I'm gonna ask for forgiveness and just keep forging ahead for a while. Can we do a little bit of late meeting tonight?
Not too late.
Okay. Thank you.
He took a lot of what I had to say. My name is Wendy Lawrence. I am a very proud resident of Apple Hill. And a lot of what I was going to say is, we are not against solar. A lot of us have solar in our neighborhood. What we are against is the wrong project in the wrong place. A lot of us have been in meetings and supporting this town solar energy map, where this is an area that is specifically identified as not a preferred site. So, I'm really going to refer back to that, that I'm really confused of why we're here yet again talking about an area that is clearly identified as we're moving forward with this town solar energy map, identifying this as not a preferred site for our town, that's not in the best interest of our town. If they really wanna do what's right, they could go to this, even though it's not an approved map yet, they could go to this and say, show us what is a gray area, what you think that's gonna work for the town, and build in one of those areas that we would support and we would be very positive on. We are not against solar. We do want to meet our criteria that we wanna have by, I can't remember the year. I agree for Libby, this wind analysis was at a 25 mile an hour analysis. We have many storms that go well above that. So, what is going to be the effect of her during one of those storms? We had a little bit of one while we were sitting here. So, that is a concern. Until I can really look through the material of the presentation, I don't have any other questions at this time. I really have to look through a lot of the presentation, but those are my key points at this point. Thank you.
Stuart, it's the best way to make this available to people, what's the best way to make this available to people, these, these reports?
Well, I, I think if those folks can go online and get it, that, that would be great, but this particular packet here, I think, is sufficient to explain the project, and I'm looking at you, Brad, just to, this is what you handed out to us this evening.
That's the slides for the screen tonight.
So, I, I mean, we could, we can make additional copies of this and have it available at the office.
Well, and I guess to Ms. Lawrence's point, the wind analysis is not part of this thing that you handed out tonight. So, maybe we could have copies of, so...
Yeah, we can make that available, you know...
Okay. So, if we could make copies of that available and, and make a link available, that would be great. So, okay, thanks. Bill Knight?
I guess I'm the leader of the Apple Hill Homeowners Association. We're not a gang. We're a very prominent group that works very hard to make our little community better. Proud to be a part of that area. One of the questions I have is, this looks better than the original plan. However, is there gonna be any kind of agreement or stipulation that at some point they can't go in and make this bigger or add to it, make it bigger than it is now?
Would you mind if I kind of collected all your questions, and then we sat Brad down and we, we let him have at it?
All right.
That'd be all right? Thanks.
Also, I noticed that they said that from the Welcome Center, they wouldn't be able to see the solar panels, but I did not hear whether or not you could see the monument from the, see the monument from that area?
Okay.
From the monument, can you see the solar panels, in other words? And we have an agreement, an MOU that they, with the old project, that they are not able to use our roads for anything but maintenance or emergencies. I notice now there are only, there are two small egresses, but in the future, I just wanna make sure that I understand that they'll never be able to change our agreement or MOU based on anything they change, saying it's a different, it's a different solar site than we actually agreed to.
So, change your existing MOU?
Right.
Okay.
So, I guess that's the only questions I have at the present time.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Brad, have a crack at that, but anybody who knows me knows that I'm a real map guy, and I walk around with maps in my, that's really why I have a phone. I couldn't resist mapping the distance from the monument to the Apple Hill, because you very, you can see it from the monument, and you also can see it from Southern Vermont College. So, it's 2.82 miles from Southern Vermont College, and it's 1.39 miles from, from the monument. But just, it's also maybe interesting to know that, that the distance from the monument to Apple Hill is, is pretty much the same as standing at Four Corners and seeing the entrance to the new highway on Route 9. And the distance of Southern Vermont College from the, the proposed facility would be the same as standing at Four Corners and looking into the beginnings of the town of Woodford. So, they're pretty far off. But the, I think that the distance maybe that we've been focusing on is the, is the .22 miles, which is from the Welcome Center to the project, and that's only the same as standing at Four Corners and looking at Ramontos, which, which feels quite close to me, because I eat a lot of pizza there, so... But if you'd be willing to take a stab at, at these questions, so I think we're looking at stipulations about the future, number one. The view from the monument, number two. And number three, could you ever, what would be, could you ever change the existing MOU with the have, with the Apple homeowners? Have I got that right, Bill? Those are your three questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it was considered a different, different site, would we have an agreement?
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thanks for the opportunity to answer those questions. So, regarding the question, could the site ever be expanded or, you know, extended versus what is shown here, there are two ways to answer no to that question. The first is, if we were able to get a certificate of public good from the Public Service Board for these two projects, that certificate of public service, that certificate of public good is for this site design. You can build that site design, and that's it. You can't expand it later. You can't grow it, or you'll be out of compliance with your permit, very similar to, you know, when you pull a building permit, you have to build what plans the city or the county has on file. You can't add on later without pulling a new permit. I can also answer definitively on the record that if we receive certificate of public goods for these two projects, this is what we would build, and we would never propose any expansion. I'm going to defer the monument question to Mark, and he'll come up right after me. And in regards to Bill's comment about the existing MOU, we could certainly have some conversation. Again, this is what we would propose to build, no access through Apple Hill neighborhood ever. The existing MOU calls for a driveway through the Apple Hill neighborhood, so I don't know if we want to strictly adhere to that, because now we're suggesting something different that is...
So, there might be a willingness to go back and rewrite some of those MOU terms and get rid of that access point?
We would definitely discuss that, absolutely. So, in other words, that's my question, if this would be a...
If this would be considered a different site, then our MOU may not apply to this site?
Well, the MOU is based on the original site design. This is a revised site design and there are elements of that MOU that have, you know, with this driveway change, for example, that's an element of the original agreement that no longer applies if this revised site design goes forward. We could definitely sit down and discuss how best to either modify that agreement or come up with a new one, if that's your interest.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Mark, do you wanna talk real quick about visibility from the monument?
My name's Mark Kane. I'm Director of Community Planning and Design for SE Group, and I was the aesthetics consultant for the project. The question that was raised about the Bennington Battle Monument, you may recall from the original submission for the original design, we did look at that. And the calculations, the time was at about 1.13 miles away, approximately, to the nearest panel. That's actually even a little bit further now, because as Brad indicated earlier, the southern part of the array has been pushed forward north, so it's increased a little bit. The other thing I would note, that at the Bennington Battle Monument, if you're familiar with it, I'm sure you all are, the windows are oriented to north, south, east, and west. And so what that creates essentially is a very unlikely opportunity to look out the east-facing window and look at, you know, out the angle of the window and look at the north through the north, because the project is slightly north and to the east of the Battle Monument itself. So based upon those... That analysis back a few years ago and with the changes that have been proposed, I don't see any particular issue with the distance and the angle of orientation.
Okay. Great. You were on this list, Mark, but it sounds like maybe you were at the top of this list.
Oh, I think that was a sign and sheet for the pride.
Right. Okay. So, great. Scratch you off. One last person. Thank you very much for that, Mark. Laura Block?
Hi.
Good evening, Laura.
Seems like I'm back again. And I appreciate the time to talk again, as a resident of Apple Hill, about this revised plan. And although I see that it has led to a greater buffer of trees, nevertheless, it's still, I think, in the wrong zone. And I'm very confused about, at least for Apple Hill, we haven't even had a decision, of course, I mean, for Chelsea Solar, for that part of the project, that, as you all know, has been denied the certificate of public good based on the town plan and based on the fact that this area is a rural conservation district, which hasn't changed. Our zone is still that. And I was looking again this morning at some of the text from the final order from the Public Service Board that denied the Chelsea project. And it says that clearing of 10.6 acres of existing vegetation runs afoul of the provision in the town plan and its vision for orderly future development. Now, I know it's not going to be 10.6 acres anymore. It will only be 8-point-something for just the Chelsea Solar. But I don't see why this making it smaller changes the fact that this is still in the rural conservation district and still in the wrong spot for our town plan. And the Public Service Board said that this project violates three of the four specific requirements in the town plan for development in the rural conservation district. First, Chelsea Solar is not proposing a limited residential development, which is the only allowed development in a rural conservation district according to your, our town plan. Second, while Chelsea has developed an extension... Some visual screening in the original plan, it would still remain visible from the Welcome Center. Now, they're claiming that this screening will now make it less visible from the Welcome Center. But I still think, based on the same comment that you made, Jean, which is, I think, if I'm correct... I don't know. Where did Brad go? Oh, he's behind me. The visuals that we see, these great, wonderful pictures, are trees that would be planted and shrubs that will be planted and how they will look in five or 10 years, which means that they won't look like this when they're first planted, presumably. So we will have a long time of things looking very naked and not screened, at least if I'm understanding those sketches or whatever, simulations, I guess I should say. So that, to me, is unacceptable and not allowed in our town plan, because that will mean that we will have a number of years where we won't have screening. And the third thing that the Public Service Board said is that the project calls for clear cutting. And that violated clearly written community standard in the town plan, and therefore this project fails the queechy test, which is the determination of how the Public Service Board partly makes their decisions. So although they have made some efforts to make this look prettier to some extent, I still don't understand why we're even having this conversation, because the project has already been denied. And I'm not sure about how the legality, the legal mechanisms work, how they can come back and now revise the plan after it's already been denied without then... Especially because they're appealing this denial in the Supreme Court. And I guess we'd need a legal...
I'll get Rob up in a minute to answer some of your questions.
Excuse me?
I'll get Rob up in a minute.
Yeah. Because that's very confusing to me. Seems like we're going in two paths at once. There's this appeal at the Supreme Court and there's also been a denial. So I guess the bottom line is, as a question to the board, is, are you telling us in Apple Hill that although they're planning, they're offering, it sounds like $200,000 if both plans get approved? I think I heard $100,000 per each plan was partly being...
That's right.
...offered. So for $200,000, it sounds like you are now likely not to defend us and not to defend the case if it goes to the Supreme Court. Basically, and it's a question, because that seems like it's the next steps. If it's in appeal to the Supreme Court, but you vote to go forward because we're getting $200,000 to basically sell us out in our neighborhood, that's how I would...
That's not accusatory, no.
Then, that means, the way I think, that you would then have our attorney not fight for us in the appeal. And I'm concerned that what this is doing is, we made an amazing precedent. The fact that Bennington had a success before the old version of the Public Service Board, I know now there are new members. It was really unprecedented. It was absolutely unprecedented. And if now Bennington says, "Whoops, I'm sorry, we're not going to keep fighting this appeal, this project," I don't know what it's gonna mean in the future for any town to then say, "We're against a project," because then you're turning against what we already won. So I hope that doesn't happen, even though I do agree with what was said. I'm all for solar. We have solar panels on our house. We've had solar panels since 1986, before anybody here, except me, was born, I think, probably. So I definitely am in favor of solar. But again, I agree with everybody else. It's in the wrong zone.
Right. Thank you, Laura. Thank you. Well, Rob, I'm gonna ask you to come up if you would be willing to... I know there's some of this you can't talk about. While he's coming up, I... You know, personally, I was the person who asked for an emergency meeting when I... Personally, when I discovered that there was no... Essentially, no screening planned for this project. So some people are gonna hate me for that, some people might not. But my feeling, when we called that emergency meeting, was that it wasn't right to bring a project to Bennington across from an expensive new Welcome Center that had no screening on it. And it feels to me like we're looking at a proposal that is vastly different, sort of a couple hundred feet of forest left in place in many spots and less in some spots, but based much more on what the community wants to see and doesn't wanna see. So I guess, Rob, the question is, if this has changed substantially, what is the... What's going to be considered as we... If we stay in court over this? And I know you can't speculate about outcomes, but what's at risk?
Well, you've got two projects here in two different procedural settings. You had the original project before the Public Service Board. There was a hearing in 2015 in Apple Hill. The board has not ruled on it. But what they have done is they've decided that they're going to consider the revised project, the hearing officer has. So right now, as a result of an order just several weeks ago, the project that we, on behalf of the town, opposed and fought for the Public Service Board, has now been provisionally changed. So Apple Hill, at least at the hearing officer's stage, has been revised and the board's considering a new project or a revised project. On Chelsea, what's before the Supreme Court is the original project. There have been a number of instances where the Supreme Court has remanded, which means sent back, to the Public Service Board a project to be considered with changes. And it's not a new... I'm sorry, I thought you could hear me.
You have to lean right into it, Rob. There you go.
How's that? Okay. The Supreme Court has, in many instances, remanded, which means sent back to the Public Service Board cases to be reconsidered with changes in the project. And so the developer has not asked for that to happen. If they do ask for that to happen, I think the court would probably consider what the town's position is on that. Whether the court sends it back or not, it's speculative. But certainly, there's a distinct possibility that the Public Service Board would consider the revised project and the court would not rule on it. So I think the real question is, and Laura raised this, is, have the changes in the project that we saw in the slides tonight been significant and substantial enough to change the Public Service Board's view of how the town plan provisions apply? And the town plan focused and the board focused on the prominently visible location, and so the degree to which the screening would change the prominent visual location or the visibility of the project would be a factual issue that the board would have to and would consider in Apple Hill, because the revised project's before it. It's minimizing clearing, not eliminating clearing is the term in our plan, and the use of non-reflective materials. And so these changes address those issues. Whether they address them satisfactorily or not is ultimately a question for the Public Service Board. But it's definitely a change, and I think you have to realistically think that it would... It might make a difference in the findings the board makes, if it has to consider, if it has the opportunity to consider both these projects. I'm not gonna speculate on the record as your attorney as to what the result would be. But clearly, it's moving closer to the standards in the plan. Whether it meets them or not is something that I think you need to think about into considering how to respond to the developer's request that you support the revised plan. And whether you support it or not, it's gonna be ultimately up to the Public Service Board to decide whether the changes satisfy the plan.
Don't move for a second. So Select Board, does that answer your questions? Laura, did you feel that got at what you were getting at?
Yeah, but I guess what I really like to follow up with that is whether you will have our town attorney fight for us, us meeting Apple Hill, as I said, and the town, to support our town plan. Or you would just cave, basically, and say, "Sure, we think this is okay if the revised plan meets our town of assuming." So we will not fight it and put in any motions or any...
Okay.
That's really my question.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think we're gonna answer that tonight. I think, you know, we're in listening mode right now and we're trying to gather information. And I hear you calling it caving, but I think what we're trying to figure out is, is this a substantially different project? And I think that's what Rob is saying we might need to consider. If we lose at this next juncture, is that the end of it?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by "lose at the next juncture." If the Supreme Court decision goes through and we litigate it, so if the court upholds the determination of the Public Service Board to deny the original project, that doesn't foreclose them from coming back with a revised project. It may foreclose some issues, and that can be a complicated legal question, but it doesn't necessarily kill all development of that site.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Rob. Diane Heiser? So we have two more people after Diane, and if it's the Select Board's pleasure, I'd love to power through and let everybody who wants to, everybody on this list, speak tonight. Is that all right? Okay. Great. Thanks for being with us.
Hi. Okay. I'm Diana Leiser. I think that I speak for everybody in my community, which is Apple Hill, again, that we are not against solar. If I didn't live in the woods, then I would have solar panels on my house. And I think Laura has a terrific point about this site going against the town plan as well as the new town proposed solar language, which says this is not a preferred site. Let me just look at my notes. Just a couple of things. I'm wondering how many projects the noise and the wind companies, those experts, have done for Echos and their... And are they totally nothing to do with EcoSolar, AlcoEnergy, you know, any of them alone Will we have another meeting to continue public comment? Because this is a lot to address and to kind of process.
Got it.
One of the issues that particularly concerns me is the feeling that this is such a total change from the energy in the Select Board. It seems to me that this is a little motivated by money. And I don't understand... Brad had mentioned tax revenue of $42,000 a year. I don't know what that comes... Where that figure comes from. And I also don't understand the figure of $16,000. That was on one of the slides as well. There was also a part on that slide that said it was a low burden to the community, and I'm assuming that means police and fire responsibility for the Apple Hill and Chelsea citing.
We'll get Brad up to answer some of these questions after you give us your list.
Yep. Yep. That sounds fine. I think that if there is... It does appear that there's increased screening, but they're very small and not mature trees. If this is... If Elcos and Echos are trying to be good neighbors, then I think that they could spend the money to buy mature trees, so that that screening is in effect right away. I'm wondering about the comment from the gentleman about there would be a donation to the conservation or conserve of Libby's Choice. That's a little bit... That just really, you know, it's trying to buy a vote, and it's really, really concerning. The other question or comment that I have is, Brad has said that the solar panels are of a different material. They're sited more closely together. The glass is not the same color. And so, I mean, this is great. This is all wonderful new technology, it sounds like. And I'm wondering how much this new technology has saved them. So, that's it.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Brad, you've got a list here, five of them. I'll take one off the list for you. And apologize for some of the confusion about the land trust question. So I am the Regional Director for the Vermont Land Trust. I was called by Libby Harris to see if we would conserve that parcel. I was called by Libby Harris to see if we would conserve that parcel, and I told her that I had a conflict of interest and that I wouldn't, I wasn't able to speak to her about it. And so I put her in touch with one of my coworkers who works in Brattleboro, Joan Weir, and they've been having, they've been having conversations that I have not been privy to. So I don't, I don't know anything about those conversations, and I don't know really what you're talking about, except to say that I was contacted and I did let her know that, you know, I had an obvious conflict of interest being on the Select Board. So I think, hopefully that straightens out that hearsay question. But Brad, you've got a number of projects that had nothing to do with the M&amp;E engineering. Will we have another meeting? I think the answer on that is yes. Where does the $42,000 come from? Where does the $16,000 come from? Could you spend the money to plant mature trees? And I didn't finish writing down the last one. Anyone get it? How much?
How much is saved by going to newer technology?
How much is saved by going to new technology? Thank you, Jeanne.
It seemed like this kind of a bringing the favor to us, but if it's, if it's new, it doesn't really bring the favor to us.
Okay. Got it?
All right.
If you get stuck, I'll feed them to you again.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be helpful. So RSG helped us out with the highway noise analysis, M&amp;E engineering, helped us out with the wind speed analysis, and those are the first projects we've ever worked on with those companies.
Ever?
Ever.
Okay.
The questions about the tax revenue and the revenue to the State Education Fund. The state of Vermont has implemented at the state level a prescribed formula for determining those tax numbers on an annual basis for solar projects. It's actually a pretty nice deal for both the developer and the town because it takes a lot of the guesswork out of it. You don't have to have the equipment assessed for a value and then discuss back and forth how that equipment is to be assessed. The state sets the formula, and it's based upon the generating capacity of the project. Tells you for any given generating capacity, combined with the town's particular mill rate, how much tax revenue the project owes the town every year, and how much tax revenue the project owes the State Education Fund every year. Using initial numbers and the tax and the state formula, those are how we generated the $42,000 estimated number and the $16,000 estimated number. I'm going to defer the question about trees and screening. I'd like to ask Mark to come up again and, and share a little bit of information about the effectiveness of the screening that's being proposed in year one.
John, can we ask what these numbers mean for, are they likely to change?
Sure. Maybe Brad just expand a little bit on initial numbers.
Yeah. Based upon the information we know today about the project, what the projects would look like when they're constructed, those are the estimates that the formula spits out. The projects haven't been through final approval yet, they certainly haven't been designed for construction yet, and those numbers could fluctuate slightly depending, they can go up or down slightly, but those are the general estimates based upon the information we have today.
He satisfied with that, Mary? Okay.
What was the last question?
How much money is saved by the new technology? Or it wasn't really money you were getting at, was it? It was how much, what's the efficiency of the new technology? Is that what you were getting at?
Yes. And I also asked a question about, compared to the taxpayers, a slide set forward.
Oh, yes.
So what was, what is that?
So is that compared to if it was turned into housing and?
Sure. Let me talk about the modules first. So the modules that were proposed originally are a technology called polysilicon. The modules that are proposed in the revised site plan are called monoperk. That's the industry word. I won't bore you with the technical details. Original polysilicon, revised site plan, monoperk. Monoperk costs more than polysilicon. We chose monoperk for the revised site plan for the same reasons we added screening and reduced the footprint, because in response to the feedback we received from the town and the community, we heard that the town and the community wanted the project not to be visible. And the monoperk choice, even though it's more expensive to buy a monoperk module than a polysilicon module, that allows the project footprint to be further reduced, and the darker black color allows it to better blend in with surrounding background colors.
And they're lower too, right?
And reducing the tilt angle makes them a, a, a lower height, although that's not directly related to the module technology.
Jeanne, can I just ask, then, is the efficiency, is, is the, I guess, the energy output going to be similar with the new footprint and the higher, more efficient modules than? Are you, are you gaining, losing?
Got it. That's a great question. The compression of the site footprint will reduce the amount of energy these projects are able to produce, will reduce the amount of power that we can sell, and will reduce the project's potential revenue.
Okay.
Let's see. There was, there's one other question after the modules.
Can you explain the height and how the height, I'm sorry?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah. Go ahead.
Can you throw over the height and how height will compare to the screening, the fencing that you're putting in on the trees?
Correct. I might defer that to Mark Kane. He can come up and give some general comments, but just in general, the, the proposed average height of the solar modules is, is seven feet, and the, I mean, the screening that's being proposed is based primarily on, on the existing forest cover, and that's substantially taller than, than seven feet. The understory is substantially taller than seven feet, and areas where we have proposed landscaping, those plantings will be taller than seven feet. So, but, but Mark can give more information about that. There was, there's one other question other than the...
Why don't we get Mark up here? You think about it.
Yeah.
I'll drag you back if we...
Absolutely. Mark?
Is this about taxpayer burden?
Taxpayer, oh yes, tax, yeah, don't leave yet, Brad. Taxpayer burden, I guess was the...
Oh, taxpayer burden. Absolutely. That's a great question.
Yep.
Just, just very briefly, compared to almost any other type of development, whether it's commercial, industrial, residential, or even agricultural, this project will have a lower burden on town services than almost anything else you could do with that property. It is a, designed to be unmanned, low to no maintenance, and does not, does not place a burden on existing town services.
Okay.
So that's what that comment was about. I'm going to pull up a different document here.
So Mark, I guess multiple questions here, but...
Yep.
You got them all? Trees?
I think so.
Paddle height, screening height.
Yep.
All right. We're just hoping about a figure to make it a little clearer to see.
Rebecca and Rose, are you still here? So we'll, we'll get you two in next, and then we're going to wrap this up for the night. Why do we spend so much of our life waiting for PowerPoint?
That is the question.
So we decided to invest in Microsoft, that's why.
Yeah. The one before that. Okay. There's a laser on here. Oh. Thank you. Okay. So one of the things I think it'd be good to clarify, some of the screening, aspects of screening that were mentioned, there was a question about the, the capacity or the ability of the initial installation of landscaping to be effective. And I think it'd be helpful, and obviously, when you look at the material, you'll get a broader sense of this, but to sort of talk a little bit about what the screening strategy was that we recommended to Ecos to implement this new plan. And it's kind of a multi-tiered approach. And the first tier approach, obviously, is what we've already talked about in terms of maximizing the separation between the property boundary and the project itself. The project has increased significantly on both the southern and northern and western edges to maximize the effectiveness of existing vegetation to screen the project. The second layer of mitigation is the installation of landscaping material along the western edge and along the, the northern edge where Ms. Harris's house is above, and a little bit on the southern edge where the access road goes in towards the Willow Road.
Landscaping material means growing stuff?
Growing stuff, yes. And the, the question, and there's also a, a segment of landscaping material, plant material that's proposed right here, as Brad indicated in the original discussion. The installation heights for the plant material are indicated on the plans provided, but the spruce trees, for example, are going in at eight to 10 feet tall, which is a pretty substantial installation height. These specific trees on the northern edges of the property, which are to address a very narrow potential view of the project from this adjacent residential property, are going in at 20 feet tall. These are going to be tree-spaded trees, and they're going to cost about $5,000 apiece. And that was the specific recommendation that we made to Ecos to address a very narrow window of opportunity based on existing natural vegetation.
Window of opportunity?
Window of opportunity to potentially see part of the project from that adjacent residential property. A very, very narrow spot, and we looked at it with our, from the, from the, from the Ecos's property, looked at the data we had from our computer modeling, and suggested the installation of some very large trees. Even at year one, the screening is effective, because the, you know, the definition of screening doesn't mean complete obliteration necessarily of the view. Now, that being said, we also have recommended to Ecos, and they have agreed to implement, an additionally tall screening fence. So the original fence was an eight-foot-tall mesh, wire mesh fence, which basically did no, had no effect on screening. The new proposal is for a 10-foot-tall wire mesh fence with a fabric, an 85% opaque black fabric affixed to it. And what that does is it actually acts as a, as a third layer of screening for the project from those potential public vantage points. And the purpose of that black screening, that 85% opaque black screening, is that it actually acts as a kind of a darkening agent to unify and blend the backdrop. And it's really going to be effective in areas that are through woods. So if you're looking at the, potentially looking at the project site from Route 7 northbound, you will see, obviously, a substantial 100, 150-foot buffer of woods, and then the eight 10-foot-tall fence beyond that is black, and you can't tell what's beyond there. And in the shadow of the trees that exist in the foreground, that becomes very effective. We have found that the use of that type of material is a very effective mitigation. So that's the third layer. The fourth layer is what Brad described as the dark modules. We actually suggested, if it was possible, to use dark modules, and they actually found a technology that allows us to do that. Again, to create a situation where the modules are acting not as something that has a high contrast, but act as, as part of the shadow of the existing woods that's retained. So this entire mitigative strategy works really well because you combine all of those things together. So is, as, you know, as compared to the previous submission, the previous proposal, and I would contend this is from everywhere we've looked on the 3D model, we have a computer 3D model we generated for this entire site, 60,000 computer-generated trees to understand the conditions as proposed. There is no place on the periphery of this project that you could look at this project and not have some, one of, one or more of those screening methods in place. And in most cases, you have more than one. And that's, that was the intention of the design. They came back to us and said, what do we need to do to make this project not visible from its surroundings? And this is the, I have had the pleasure, or horror, depending on your perspective, have, having worked on solar projects in Vermont for about the last 15 years for both the Vermont Department of Public Service and for private developers. Worked on about 40 solar projects through the 248 process. And this is by far and away the most comprehensive set of screening that we've ever, I've ever seen. It's $100,000 at least of landscape mitigation, not to, not to mention the added premium costs of the solar modules as designed and the screening scrim that's around the edges of it. So this is a pretty substantial investment, and I think the, Mr. Campbell mentioned that this was, seems like a different project. And again, from my perspective, having worked on the original submission and having been asked to look at this new one and come up with a mitigation strategy that we think works, this is a very different project.
Okay. Thank you very much. So why don't you stay seated there? We'll take a couple more questions. Go ahead.
Just one quick question. The 10-foot black mesh fence, is that only on the highway side, or is that around the whole project?
It's around every area where there's public visibility. So on the interior, the fence goes around the interior of the, of the raise, it won't be on the interior side of it, the, the side of the Apple Hill project that's facing Chelsea. There's no reason for it there. But on the north side, along the neighborhood of, of Apple Hill, along the north side of the Apple Hill project towards Apple Hill, yes.
And that is quite attractive to have a 10-foot black mesh fence?
At, the, the purpose of the black fence is not to be attractive. The purpose of the black fence is to combine with the natural vegetation that exists to make it recede into the background. And if you look at the simulations, you will see that there are some simulated trees in the foreground, mid foreground, that are acting as screening. The black fence acts as a, as a mitigative step in the background. It doesn't, it would never work, we would never propose it right next to people. This is not the design of it. This project is now, you know, 600, 700 feet away from most observers. It's about 1,600 feet away from the, from the, from the Apple Hill, for the Chelsea project to the Welcome Center. At those distances, that's what the effectiveness of that black mesh is for.
Laura, one more question? I want to move on.
Yeah, I've a couple of questions.
Pretty quickly, please. Can you make them quick, please?
What happens if any of these trees dies? Who is responsible for replacing them? And two, I thought I saw on the printed stuff that there are little shrubs, myberum and other low shrubs, where will they go?
Yes, so the...
What happens when they die?
Yes, okay. So the, the purpose of the, of a replacement, I actually, we're working with the department on the, on the landscape mitigation requirements for CPGs that have just been worked on with the Department of Public Service to go to the Board. The purpose of the landscaping has to be maintained for the life of the project. So Ecos will be on the hook for, for a monitoring period, probably two to three years, typically speaking, after installation to make sure things are, are growing well. If anything dies, it has to be replaced. And then, obviously, the, the CPG condition would likely say to maintain the life of the landscaping to the life of the landscaping. You also mentioned the composition. Yes, there are proposed deciduous species there, including myberum. The purpose of this is not to create a, a natural wall, for example, of, of cedars, for example, but to create a more naturalistic hedgerow effect. And we've found, and my experience has found that using a combination of different kinds of plant material over time actually creates a better gnar, as opposed to a monoculture of arborvitae or something like that. So the idea is to let, let the, let a combination of plant materials kind of come into play and, and become more effective over time. In Ms. Harris's case, you saw the simulation that was shown from Ms. Harris's residence, we actually increased the number of spruce trees there, or pines, whatever, whenever we ended up deciding to do conifer plantings, to actually add some more immediate screening, even though that, that from that vantage point, the view down to Apple Hill is substantially, you know, substantially great, and there is the remnant apple orchard that exists in that middle area as well.
So is it our job to tell you, somebody, we have a contact person, when, if any of these trees dies, or is it up to Ecos, Alco, Ecos Brad, to make sure that somebody can make monitoring all of the perimeter of all of these plantings for 25 years? Is that what you're saying?
The initial three, three, or two to three-year period of time is the most critical for new plantings. If, if a landscape contractor comes in and prepares the soil properly, prepares the site properly, installs the plant material, there usually is a warranty period, and that's usually the two or three-year period of time. My experience with the Public Service Board has been that they require within that two or three-year period of time, that if a, something dies, the, the landscape, the proponent has to do a monitoring plan every year. They have to go inspect it. People in my staff have actually done this for solar projects, go out and inspect, and you look, and you see if something's died, and you flag it. And then the, the petitioner has a certain amount of time to, to fix that, whether it's a few months or whatever the time period is. I suspect that's the same thing that'll happen here.
We'll, we'll do some more work on that, Laura. We'll get some answers for you on that. Mark, thank you very much.
Sure.
I really appreciate your time. Rebecca, would you like to come up and give us your brief thoughts, please? Thank you for hanging in there.
Well, my name is Rebecca Dragon. Some of you know I'm a resident of Powell, so I'll be very, very quick. As a good neighbor, I wanted to come and share with you what we learned when we attended the BCRC Energy, the Public Hearing for the ratification of the Regional Energy Plan. And this does apply loosely to this project and also to what we have gained through Act 174 with Town Say and substantial deference at the PSB. We were told under no uncertain terms by June Tierney, who is the head of the PSD, that the legislative language is extremely ambivalent in regards to deference of the regional plan versus deference of the town plan. So I know that my Select Board and the people in my town were very surprised to hear that the town plan would not receive substantial deference over a regional plan that, that was very easily made mincemeat of in, in comparison to a regional plan. And so I just wanted to put a bug in your ear about that. I have a very long correspondence that I could, I'm happy to send to anyone, including the, some legislative interpretation by June Tierney and all these people. I'd be happy to share all of it with you. It's something that everyone needs to be aware of, that if there's... that that town plan gets, gets the top dog position. So that's all I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. And there is a substantial deference process that we're going through, but that's kind of down in the weeds. Rose, are you, is Rose still here? No. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for a good conversation. Unless there are last thoughts from the board, I, we really need to wrap this up about an hour ago. But it was a good, good conversation, and I think it's pretty obvious to me that we need to do this again. So at very least, on the 10th, we will welcome back Libby Harris, who has said that she wants a chance to speak. And if there are other people that have not had a chance to speak, they will certainly be given first choice at, at presenting to the board, and Mary has her hand up again.
So it will be July 10, and it will be an agenda item?
Yes. Is that, is that...
July 1.
Okay. Is that okay for the board?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, there's a good reason to get on. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you very much to the people who made the long trip down here and for making the presentation, and thank you to the general public for all of your good words. I'm gonna give us a three-minute break, five-minute break, and then let's come back together again.
Informative discussion, and I think the community benefited by it. But moving right along, we have the matter of the tax anticipation borrowing process. I think it's been presented already. Stu, could you just advise us of what you need to make that a reality?
All right. Yes, we have the line of credit and several other documents, the resolution, and the non-arbitrial certificate, tax anticipation borrowing line of credit. Those three documents require a signature, and generally, what we ask the board to do is make a motion to accept the documents and waive the reading of the resolution.
I'll entertain the, the motion in that context.
So moved.
Second. So any further discussion on the borrowing process? If not, all in favor signify by aye. Aye. That is unanimous, and six in favor.
We'll circulate that, and you're gonna have to squeeze your names in. They only give us five lines.
Okay. Then we now have the, the next item on the agenda is the Water and Sewer Fund budget adoption, set rates. We have to discuss the meeting of last Monday, the 19th, I think. Could you bring us up to date? You did circulate a memorandum relative to the rationale for the budget that should be considered by the board.
And, and, yeah, I'll just do this for, for the folks at home who, unfortunately, we didn't have coverage from any of the media folks at that meeting, so. The water fund we are proposing is up 8%, principally due to the addition of the bond cost from the $3 million South End Waterline project, which is a continuing project. That is the one major project that is in our budget for the coming year, estimated at around $300,000. But even given that, the water fund budget that we presented to you, without the bond cost, was actually decreased $109,950 from last year.
So you belt tightened out $109,000 from the budget?
Yes, but once you add the bond cost back in, which comes in this year at 321,720, and this is the highest it will be, it will begin to decrease over the years, we find that the water fund is up 8%. And unless we remove the projects that we have proposed and we are committed to under our continuing water quality permit, we must spend that money. And as I said, the, the increase in the budget itself at 8% is about, oh dear, 200 and some odd, $210,000 total. That is the water fund. That will result because of the additional cost and the continuing decline in usage, and that has been a continuing issue for us. It's not dramatic, but every time you reduce the amount of gallons that you're using, the cost per gallon must go up, because many of these costs are fixed costs. This will result in a rate increase of 12.5%, and you have that in your rate proposal. The sewer fund, on the other hand, was up only 2.97% over last year. We are suffering still from a decrease in usage, so even that 2.97% increase in the budget will result in a 7.75% increase in the rates. And just to give you the dollar amounts, just so everyone understands, the flat rate, and that's what we'll use, will be going from $118 per quarter in water to $133 per quarter in water, and from $88.50 in sewer to $95.50 rounding off in water. So there will be an increase this year. In a sense, the beauty of it is, is that once you get that jump, because the bond cost will begin to decrease over time, we should not see another major increase in, in the water fund for a number of years. As you know, we have a bond coming up, a bond vote coming up on the sewer treatment plant improvements, and that we'll have to deal with, but that will certainly impact the budget going forward. So I would ask that the board adopt the budgets and approve those rates as I have described them.
Could I have a motion for that purpose?
So moved.
And a second, and discussion on the, the subject of the, the motion. And one of the observations that I would have, it's unfortunate that the rates are taking that hit, but it's not something that probably three years ago wouldn't have been envisioned when the decision was made to bond. We now have to start paying that down, and if we didn't have that bond, we would be level funded or even less, more likely than not. Although the consumption issue seems to be of continuing relative concern to management and this board.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't think so, because most people want to conserve water, but, and because of the fixed costs of the systems, it does tend to drive the rates up.
So it's really increasing population is what we need to do? I mean, it's not that we want to encourage people to use less, use more water, right?
Yes, yes. Use more water. Drink more water.
And one of the things that, you know, we do have to look for other resource revenues, and, you know, we do have, we sit on this multimillion dollars' worth of water that everybody at least has come testified to.
Why don't you start the business?
I would like to, if I, I'm gonna start a Fund Me Now campaign, and it is something that has some relevance and merit. We should look at that and continue to, whether or not Stu feels the need for additional resources and consultations, consultants, engineers, or otherwise, we as a board should be ready to support management in that context.
I would support the idea of at least looking at a feasibility study of what it would cost to build a plant.
Well, I, I, it's gonna be in the millions of dollars to build a plant.
Well, the plan would be, yes, but the study...
Yes. Well, the study might not be that expensive, but I think...
The public has been begging for an answer to that question.
Well, I'm not sure I agree with that.
The town's not a business. Can we move on?
Wait a second.
No, you know, I think...
I think this is something that we should answer.
We're not gonna get into the build a building.
I mean, I can, I can put together some rough numbers on what it would cost to, to build a facility, and then you have to calculate in, which is all speculative, how do you market the project, product, how many staff people do you need, all of those things, but please don't expect it in two weeks.
I want it tomorrow.
We're kind of buried right now with TIFs and other things, but...
This is a long-term problem and a long-term resolution, but it's the type of thing that we do have to address it, and it's, it is not gonna go away, because the water issue is going to be one that we have to address.
Never, I'll hold my question until another meeting.
So all in favor of the budgets as presented and discussed signify aye by aye?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous, six in favor, and no one opposed to it.
Just on the record, it would, you know, it's important, one of the things we learned, one of the many important things we learned at that last session, and Stuart, thank you for taking the time to go through all those things, line by line, with us and your staff, which was extremely helpful. And I'm sorry, we took criticism for being in the library for it, but it was very...
Learning experience at the library.
Very difficult and very worthwhile, I think. But one of the things I heard was that we had to do that bond. We didn't have any choice. The state basically forced us to do it. So it's not like we were spendthrifts and, and were throwing money around on, on some optional project. We had to do it. So we did what had to be done, right?
We did.
And now you're tightening your belt below last year's levels, so that's good, too. So I'm glad it's passed, but it, it shouldn't have to be such a fracas.
Thank you.
Fracus is the word. Let that... The next item on the agenda?
The manager's report. I didn't have a written report for you today, and actually had not planned an action item, but I was reminded by my finance director that we have to renew the bond anticipation note for the rec center repairs. Originally, the voters gave us authorization to spend $680,000 repairing their rec center wall and some interior work. We have paid that down to the, to a point now where it's $122,113 that we're, we're attempting to borrow on an annual basis. The rate is at 1.95% per annum, and it's a similar thing. I would look for a motion to accept the bond and waive the reading of the resolution. The same three pages have to be signed. It's a very similar document to what you've already seen.
I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, six in favor of the...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to mark the pages for you, so you make it easy.
We're gonna need a relatively brief executive session on the matter of contracts, which would be more appropriate for us to consider in executive session because of the nature of the discussion. Is there anything else that you have, Stuart?
I have nothing else for you tonight.
Are we also going to consider litigation in that executive session? Do we need to state that?
No, we're not going to.
Okay.
I don't think we need...
I don't think we need to do litigation. We may...
That might be the next meeting.
Face that question after the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. All in favor of going into executive session, signify by aye?
Aye.
Six in favor, and we are now in executive session.